I just want to make sure that you're aware of these big decisions. You have your own.
Yeah, that's for us. Straight on. Straight on. Has enough. Yeah.
Could you imagine the worst case?
Wait, you mean you got that?
So there it is. So they do the other side and then you can do so.
I call the order, the July 13, 2011 special meeting from the United States Council. Please stand for the special meeting.
We pray that you will help our council members to make decisions that will benefit our community and make it a better place to live. Give them courage and faith to carry on their duties. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My fellow agents to July, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Here.
Okay.
Here.
Long here.
Found her.
Here.
Listen.
Here.
Stop.
Here.
Chamber.
Here.
This time.
Here.
This is the special meeting on Monday night as we finally invited Arcadis here to speak with us this evening.
Good evening and good evening. It's evening to talk about water on a hot night. Perfect combination. I have with me, I'm Dave Frank with Arcadis, and with me is a senior project engineer from our firm who has been part of this project throughout the U.S. evolution, Chris Ryan. Chris is going to be honored on the objective.
What was Chris's last name?
Ryan. R-Y-M-A-N.
Thank you.
I'm going to give a brief history on the evolution of the project from its origins in 2007. Certainly at any time if you want to know more, do not hesitate to ask. I didn't want to come and give you an hour long presentation being the eve of a holiday and a lot of factors, but certainly don't want to cut you off short either. Anything you want to know, with Chris's help, we can tell you about how we got to where we are today from starting back in 2007. Just a couple of quick facts. The existing water treatment plant stems back to 1934 original construction and saw some major improvements in 1954. Arcadis and the city developed a preliminary engineering report, P E R. That's the USDA. In 2007 evaluating every aspect of the treatment plant. And that document followed the USDA guidelines in order to be qualified for funding from USDA. If it was determined to profit later. The outcome of that report is that it was recommended a new water treatment plant. Subsequently, Arcadis and the city negotiated a new water treatment plant scope and fee with the city. That started in the timeframe of November 2007. We were all completed about January 2008 and then the three-party contract went to the USDA for their review and signature. Ultimately, it was signed in February of 2008. Those services for Arcadis specific to the plant design included designing, construction administration, and resident project implementation for RBR. That might be hard to see with that long light, but just a couple of quick photos if you haven't been back to your plant. Combination of structures that again were built in 1934, 1954. You know, it was current technology for that time and it has served you reasonably well, but it is outlived its useful life. Facilities like this usually have about 50 years useful life for the overall structures. Mechanical equipment is usually 15 to 25 years mechanical and structural equipment. So a lot of the portions of this facility are well past its useful life and that led to the conclusion that it's time to build a new water treatment plant. This is just one elevation view of the proposed water treatment plant. It's a modern concept where we try to keep all of the treatment facilities under one roof. You won't have any open tanks outside. Now that water runs through the roof of the well, stays inside a pipe or within this building until it's back in the pipe and coming out your faucet. Just to give you a better idea what it might look like, this is a similar plan from an architectural standpoint. You would have a different layout and some of your treatment processes are different, but architecturally, this is similar to how your plant will look when it's completed. The top photo is how your clear well will look. It'll be a certain clear well with a dome. As noted, the project kicked off in February of 2008 signing the agreements and we immediately began the design and bidding phase services. Those were scheduled to take, to be completed by mid-2009, at which point we would transition immediately into the construction phase of the project. With about an 18-month construction period, the plant was scheduled and planned to be online by the first quarter of 2011. Under the terms of the USDA during, they required to have a post-construction activity that occurs one year after the plant goes online. So the little red square at the end represents where we would come back with operations specialists and do a checkup and make sure the plant's been operated properly. So we did start immediately in 2008 and we had the design substantially completed on schedule. That's the point at which USDA said, hey, that's great, but you know what? We don't have the money for you. So cool your jets, kind of back burner it, and we'll get back to you. We had already at that time proceeded with some of the regulatory permit reviews and we already got some permits in hand, but with their instructions, we did not submit it for their final review, which is the final step before you can go proceed with bidding. So that was roughly in the third quarter of 2009. We continue to keep track with USDA. I know that city administration, Keith, has spent a lot of time. Chris has continuously spent time just prompting them over the last three years. Finally, in April, you got your letter of condition, which means, hey, city, we've got the money for you. Now you can proceed, get back on track, and finish these steps to allow you, to allow us to let you proceed with bidding. Effectively, what we've looked at then as a result of the USDA's delayed funding is a three-year extension of the schedule. What you can see here is we pretty much stopped at the completion of design. So all the same services we were going to perform in 2009 and 2010 will still be performed in the same timeframe, the same window, 18-month window, but with a three-year gap in between. Why that's important is there's an impact to us from a business standpoint. Back in 2007 when we estimated our fees, they were estimated in direct correlation to the schedule that's in the contract. That's all we can do when we estimate our level of service is project out the number of man-hours we're going to spend, whether it's a structural engineer, drafter, surveyor, and what year it's going to be spent. And we try to predict what those wait rates are going to be. That's how we did all of our fees. With a situation like this, when we commit to those fees back in 2007, expecting to perform them in 2010, it's a problem then when those same services are not provided for three years later. This is a cash flow schedule. This ties back to the actual USDA contract. And I just want to touch on briefly that the total fees were defined as loan sum, but the way USDA contract works is they define milestone payments. And that's what you see in the first column, is there'd be a chunk of the loan sum payment defined as 50% of the total at design completion. Then you get another 20%, taking you up to 70% of the total when it's ready for bidding. Then at the bidding, completion of the bidding phase, you get another 10% of the total money, taking you up to 80%. That leaves 20% of your total, which 15% is spread out on a monthly basis during construction. Then they hold back 5% payment until you do that post-construction work that I mentioned occurs one year after the plant's been in operation. And that's what's represented there. So as you can see in the third column, our contract identified a schedule associated with the fees and the planned progress of the project. And it was anticipated to get to the bidding complete stage in July 2009. Right now, if we have authorization to proceed after this month, we're probably tracking for about December in 2012. So a three-year delay, just over a three-year delay. And you can see subsequently, the project will track on the same path, the same schedule, just everything's delayed three years. Back to the contract. It is a good contract. USDA spends a lot of time in coming up with it. It is an industry standard contract, EJ CDC. It does a good job of fairly distributing the risks to all parties on a major and complex project like this. We all signed it because it was a sound contract. It does have a clause in there that recognizes though if at no fault of the engineer, the continuous progress is impaired, such as this situation, a three-year delay caused by the USDA, that the engineer's compensation shall be adjusted equitably.
Excuse me one second. Why isn't there something in the contract that says by no fault of the city it's delayed? That, that's weird.
I don't know. This is, again, this is a USDA standard contract.
I mean, it seems like there is not a fair distribution of risk if we're not protected by the lay by the USDA, but you guys are.
Right. Well, I think the position of the USDA is probably that it's a combination of loan and grant money and if they can't give it to you today and they can't get it to you for two or three years, you have the option to go to another funding agency. You're not, you're not bound to utilize our funding.
Is there another funding agency, Keith, for it? So there is no other funding agency?
There is, but it's all loan.
It's all loan money?
Correct. Yeah. The other major program for projects of this nature would be the Ohio EPA revolving loan fund, water supply revolving loan account. And it's, it's just loan. There'd be a chance you could qualify for roughly 2% loan money, but that's still hard to beat combinations of grant and modestly modest interest loan money. Also, USDA allows you to spread it over 30 to 40 years, whereas EPA requires a 20-year term. So that's how they keep competitive between the two programs.
Well, we certainly weren't going to go out and borrow money. I mean, that, I think goes without saying. Or else we would have done it, that, explored that in his three-year timeframe.
At the end of the day though, as I've alluded to, we're a business just like any other business, having a three-year delay in fees that we anticipated to, tasks we anticipated to perform back in 2009 at a certain cost. Now that we're going to perform those in 2012, 2013, our costs have increased and we need to recognize those increases. The contract does include a specific escalation clause to account for these, exactly what has happened, and those are prescribed in the contract. And I guess the point tonight, first and foremost, is to give you all a chance to get updated on the overall project as it did start before some of your terms here. And so that's why we're happy to cite for this particular issue. We're happy to give you any other background if you want to get into the technical aspects, that's fine too. But the biggest need at this point is we don't do anything without your authorization. With or without a contract, we don't move on the next phase without your authorization. That's just the word. And the problem is we're at a pinch point where we can't perform with the balance of the contract. We need to respectfully request that you implement the escalation clause and make adjustments to our fees.
Didn't that three-year timeframe, this, this delay period, you said Mr. Ryan was diligently working with the USDA and trying to get them to move ahead? Why didn't you guys come to the city and say, you know what? We need to do something because while, if we reach that three-year time period, our fees are going to escalate? I mean, was there ever a communication between you guys and the city?
There is constant communication, but there was no one particular thing that either party, either Arcadis or city, our team, would do. USDA works on their own schedule.
I'm not talking about USDA, I'm talking about your contract with us.
That is the USDA.
Did you ever come to us and say, you know what? We're going to have an issue and we might want to rethink these timeframes?
I don't think we had that specific conversation because again, as we know, you didn't have other options to consider.
You're, that's my point.
I think that's what we are hoping here though. And I, I would suggest that we don't want to start either of us with an adversarial relationship after waiting for three years, both parties.
Right.
And I think coming into this meeting and pretty much.
Threatening.
I mean, all we've talked about this whole time is a contract from four years ago and what it's doing to you. So I mean, you're not discussing in any shape or form what it's doing to taxpayers of the city.
Correct. Does Arcadis care about that?
Absolutely.
And how do they share in that?
Well, for those of you who don't know, we've been serving the city for over 20 years.
Where? Where, where is that?
Serving municipalities is our business, just like any other vendor that, that serves. We can't control the funding agencies.
But you can't control your costs.
Well, yes. I mean, I guess we're a business like any other. If we want to maintain qualified individuals, we have to pay merit raises. We can't, we can't tell people they're going to work for us than they did three years ago for a particular project.
I think I worked for you, you're making 50 grand more now than you did three years ago. And I mean, it's.
Well, keep in mind with all due respect, when you look at our fees, I mean, we're talking dozens of people working on these jobs. It's not like an individual is making a specific amount of additional money. Our margin is fair and industry standard. I believe we only have more than about 5% profit in this. It's a, it's a matter of covering the costs.
Well, if we would have started the project three years ago, would you not have given merit raises?
They were already forecasted and we already knew in 2007 what the schedule would be. And we already knew we would be doing construction in 2009 and 2010. So we were already forecasting wage increases for those years. That was already built into those rates. Maybe at the third year though, from a management standpoint, you might want to say, hey, well, we've got that split or clause, we can take it to the bank anyways. I mean, you guys didn't really have any incentive to move this project along because you're making extra money every year that we don't do something. Again, with all due respect, there was not a single thing we could do that could be wrong aside from weekly phone calls to USDA. I don't know how to help you be more familiar with the way USDA works. Talked to neighbors down in Buckeye Water District. You know, we went through the same program with them. Albe Angeles can explain to you USDA works at its own schedule. All we can do is when they identify that we're missing a document, get to them as soon as possible. I'm not speaking for the rest of this council, just myself, but I don't care what the USDA's processes, I care what your process, the relationship is with us. I don't care about the USDA side of this at all. I. What would, what would the alternative have been? If we're looking at $50,000 surprise now that we've received money in the last couple of months, I would suggest you work with us on what that needs to be. I'm not opposed to paying a percent more. I, one wasn't involved in your negotiations. I would never agree to open anything that benefited you and not us. I can't control that. But to say that there's protections built into this to help the city, I think is absurd.
Yeah, I mean, there was nothing in there other than air escalation.
What would prevent us at this point from just re-bidding it out? Do I get your qualification statement? Nothing. Well, it would not be a certified set of documents at this point because of the time that's elapsed. Right. If you, if you read further in the things that have to be redone, you know, there's several things that have to be redone now, things that we performed. So I'm saying we. It was very. Well, what's stopping us from just starting with someone else and put this back up bid with prices four years newer? There'd be several detailed things that we could talk about with your attorney. So I mean, that's the way you want to go, that was just a pure threat? That's all I wanted to have in this. No, I, sir, I am not threatening at all. With all due respect, what you're saying is we should just ignore the fact that it's going to cost us more money as a business and we should go proceed with you and knowing that we're going to lose money. We're a business just like any other. We, we can't just casually accept that. We can't, can't just casually say, oh, okay, yeah, we'll take, we'll take a loss on the job.
How much were you paid at this point? Five hundred thousand?
I believe we've been paid six hundred nine. If no work.
If we, yeah, if he's on your work.
Then we have to redo. No, no, no. It gets very detailed without pulling out fine specifications and showing you. It was substantially complete in time and we had most of the permits in hand. Some of those permits have expired after three years.
What, what permit, that was, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but the permit issue is what permits did you hold that were necessary at that time? Because construction, we weren't even thinking about construction because we didn't have any funding yet.
No. With USDA, you have to forge ahead based on the expectation that they're going to have the funding following the place. They're constantly talking to you routinely throughout the design phase to make sure you're giving them all the different documents they need. You're giving them all the evidence that the project was going to head into bidding construction. Unfortunately, the way their program works then, you get to that 11th hour, you're all ready, we're all ready. And USDA says, ah, no, we overcommitted and we don't have the money for you that we thought we were going to have.
So what permits in particular did you hold that, that you have tabled?
Your statewide building permit is in hand and needs some amount of effort to renew.
Ohio EPA, if I'm allowed to speak first.
Yeah, the Ohio EPA plan approval. So we have a set of documents that's approved from the state building department standpoint, from the Ohio EPA regulatory standpoint. There's a second, lesser EPA permit that still needs to be obtained for the sanitary compensation.
It's been actually, that's been obtained already, it needs to be re-submitted. It needs to have to be redone because the time has elapsed on it.
Okay.
Some of these regulatory agencies are willing to extend the permit. Some of them aren't without some amount of paperwork. Some of them are requiring a complete redo. So it's a, it's a combination of activities for the multiple permits.
What would stop us from putting this out for bids? Again, is if we went with a different company, we would lose the half a million dollars that we already paid because a second engineering firm, knowing engineering firms over there, you can't, another firm couldn't use your plans completely because then they, they would be liable if something you signed was wrong. And we, we.
More specifically based on the Ohio RISE code, they would probably lose their license for what's called plant stamping.
And the, the second thing, and we should, we, we've learned our lesson. I don't know if everybody has. We had a stormwater plan designed by one engineering firm. Went with a second engineering firm to design out the storm sewer plan that we draw now. They, they started from zero again and are duplicating and that's why their bid was so high because they can't accept the previous engineering firm's drawings without, without some form of liability. So it costs us more to switch engineers there also. So we lose half a million dollars if we put it out for bids and went with a different company. They start over again and redo it.
And you're happy with spending the taxpayer's money, which they're wasting it. You're, you're laying a.
Well, we'd like to lose that half a million to redid.
No, I would like the company that we're working with to work with us. But you're, you're choosing to just lay down and accept it.
I'm not laying down, but I'm telling you why we can't do that.
So the way that I see this is Arcadis has other businesses in the city right now from the Storm Stewart project that we're doing over here. I was the one personally to support you guys to do it. I can tell you right now.
Oh, my goodness.
But that, if, if you're looking at this from a business standpoint, I can assure you that this $50,000 you're going to make here will have long-term cost ramifications. So just weigh that in your decision-making process and what you need to do.
And there's no negotiation. I mean, that's, instead of 4%, 2%, I mean, it's not our, I, I understand it's not your fault, the USDA. I'm not saying it is. And I can't believe that you would think it was our fault either. I'm not saying you do.
Not at all.
But given that fact, that the contract that we signed basically protects you guys for inflation costs, but does nothing for us in terms of delays that we have no control over. I can't believe that you can't say, listen, given the fact that we've done work for you in the past and we want to do work for you in the future, we need to come to some type of agreement. Maybe not 4%, maybe 2%. I, I can't believe that that's not an option for you guys.
Well, I'm certainly willing to sit down in a more appropriate forum and go toe-to-toe on nickels and dimes. But one thing, you know, I mentioned before and is important to come to play here, we're, we're not the type of business that just names the price and has some, some huge cushion of profit. We work on a very narrow profit margin. And, and that profit margin right now, even with these escalations, is probably the neighborhood of 5%. 5% of our total might be profit. So when we talk about, you know, not having half of the escalation, the first question is, does that need any profit or does that even actually cut into our costs?
Well, what's the cost of this total profit? Do we even matter?
The construction cost or the?
The whole thing. What's, what?
What are you comparing it to?
It's based off of.
Right. What, what is that, is it based off of 10 million, 12 million, 13 million?
Well, go forward, I think our balance is. When are you looking at balance? Are you looking at the gross?
Right.
That you're looking at your pie percent. Oh, I, I don't know what, what profit we had on the original 690. That was three years ago and I haven't looked at the books for that. That was three years ago and I haven't looked at the books for that. I don't know if we lost money, made money. It usually is in the neighborhood of five to ten percent would be a normal margin on this type of work.
Right, but we're looking at the gross. So if you look, I'm, I'm, if you're looking at ten percent on ten million dollars, your net profit isn't really a lot, right?
No, no, the ten million is the construction contract.
Understood.
Our, our remaining balance is somewhere in the neighborhood, I think it's around seven hundred and fifty thousand. So for easy numbers, I think it's called eight hundred thousand. So if I've got five, if, if I do actually have five percent profit, and keep in mind that's a risk thing, I mean, we have a defined level of effort in the contract that says what we have to accomplish during, during the performance of these services. And we do our best job to estimate who's going to be doing it, how many hours it's going to take, and we're predicting that in two years in, in the future. If things go crazy on the, on the construction side, we end up working a lot harder and, and even if we had a five percent margin, it evaporates like that. And obviously, you're not going to want me to come back crying to you about a bad contract or you're going to tell me to perform in accordance with your budget. So that's why it's very difficult to, for me to sit here and say, oh, yeah, you know, we're willing to take the risk of cutting out all profit and then we'll see what happens.
I'm not asking you to cut out all profit.
What I asked for, you know, I mean, two weeks ago, was for you to come in, kind of close to our meeting, and discuss and prompt us and negotiate something fair that we both agree with.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that invitation.
That, that was what I suggested. So I'm not sitting here saying, I want you to make this escalator clause go away. My exact words two weeks ago is, I, I don't mind if it is one, but if you come in here and tell us this is what it's going to be and us have no say in what it's going to be, I think is wrong. And so I'm asking for it to be equitable for both of us that we can agree on and work together rather than, if, if you don't do this and you pull us to this regardless of what happens, you get paid, but you would have an adversarial relationship here and with any, anyone else that, that sees that the way Arquitas does business with a small city like us could be dangerous. From, from a cost standpoint, they get into a contract that, they said, well, I can't work with this and I know they're going to hold me to this number for years from now when I finally show up. I mean, and the way the economy is, no one ever knows when the grant's going to come through. So they can sign a contract and in ten years should now have a four percent escalator clause, it's going to cost them forty percent of ten million dollars. That's risky. So all I'm saying is, we'll work together on something that, that works out for both of us, we're happy, you're happy. You're not going to be as happy, but you should be somewhat to know if it's any work with it or, and we move forward.
Well, in that three-year timeframe, did you talk to any of our local politicians?
I have been involved.
Any congressmen, anything like that?
We didn't speak directly with congressmen. We both worked directly with USDA throughout the three-year period delay and there were times also, I'd like to point out, there were times where we pointed out to USDA that our fees would be increasing every time they identified that it was being delayed further. The last time we notified them of that, they again told us to not do anything about it, let's get the initial funding in place and then we'll deal with it later on. That was a version from USDA.
Just for reference to the, Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, all of your costs in the project end up rolling up under the USDA funding. I don't mean that as any tech cancellation, but, so the ultimate project costs roll back into USDA calculation sheet, which then ultimately they'll affix to you the percentage of grant money and also the final loadout, which actually should have been in the letters of conditions. It shouldn't change.
Yeah, but our understanding, none of these extra, none of these fees or increases are going to be in any grant money, is that correct, Keith?
No, we don't know.
Right. There, we do know that USDA will, or at least they've identified that if there are cost increases on the project, either due to construction increases or others, they will seek additional funding. There's no guarantee that they'll get additional funding for it, but they will seek it from the federal government higher-ups within USDA.
If, if we exceed the amount that they've set aside, there's some contingency in there. So, and I'll, can we have a look at that contingency?
There's a one million, a little over one million dollar contingency in the overall dollar amount of funding account now.
And when will you know that? If they're going to cover it?
Basically, I think right now they're waiting for the formal submission of the plans and specs, which they told us three years ago, don't give us, because we're not ready to look at it, because we're not going to give you the money we told you we had for you. But now that we have the letters of conditions, their, their position is, oh, now we're ready, go ahead and do X, Y, Z, get your right-of-way most done, get those submitted, get the plans and specs submitted, get all your permits renewed and we're ready to go. What we constantly reminded them of, and what we'll need to do again, and that's, might be on my next slide, we want to just bounce back, is we're yet again another year since we gave them an updated cost estimate. We've been getting on routine cost estimate updates. So at whatever point they actually look to Washington DC to lock us in for money here, they've got a good number. And if they might have locked us in, we gave them a big blast July.
Yes.
Last July was last night we gave them the number. They didn't lock us in till April. Regardless, just so then we go out to bid and we put out a good number and we won't have a pinch point where we're not within ten percent of the contractor's bid, we need to develop a new construction cost estimate. And that comes into play with seven items that we were identifying need to be done at this point in time. We already kind of mentioned the expired permits that need to be refiled, number one, the EPA stubble for the sanitary pump station. These are our biggest efforts. In three years, a lot can happen, especially in the last decade. Not only in our industry, but a lot of industries, companies buying each other out, consolidating products, changing product features. This is a custom-designed water treatment plant. We designed specifically around a couple different manufacturers of equipment that not only it's going to serve you and do what it needs to do, but it fits within the infrastructure that we designed. We need to go back and make sure those guys didn't go belly up, didn't get bought out and have their particular way of doing it thrown out by the penny bottom out, and get updated prices from them. Those prices are, are critical to provide an even updated cost estimate. That's essentially items three and four, along with regulatory changes. Then there's a couple minor items that are requested from the city right now. Upon reflection of the original scope, it was decided it would make more sense to go ahead and build into the documents, having the contractor demolish the old water unit as opposed to trying to accomplish that in-house. So we're talking about inserting that into the set. And there's a new driver being developed to get traffic to the plant away from a residential property, and so we're going to reflect that in the documents also. And ultimately, with all those things completed, we'll be able to update the construction cost estimate and in conjunction with whatever we agree upon on our fees, those numbers will go back to the EPA, they will put them back in their balance sheet, they will rerun the numbers and reaffirm presumably what percentage of grant applies to the project versus the loan, and also if they have to go back and find a few extra dollars for added funding, or if we're comfortably within their contingency amount, that they will let us move forward without any adjusting their funding total.
Dan, can we actually have a closed-door meeting for discussing?
Well, the, the purpose of this nice meeting is to allow these two gentlemen to come and explain to you what their position is and I think they're prepared to take out the advisement that the council suggested. This really isn't something for executive session, a public meeting, but the will of the council can be relayed through management back to Arquitas and West Persa and we can attempt to reach and agree in that fashion. This was an informational arrangement for the city.
Can I, can I say to them, and Keith, I'd like that closed-door meeting with Arquitas and three councilmen? Or does that then become an issue because there are three councilmen and it has to be a public meeting?
No, we talked about the majority of the council, once you have three, you're a councilor.
Oh, yeah, I disagree with that. I guess the subject's big enough. We're all just...
Oh, I, yeah, I have nothing wrong with that, but I mean, we...
I don't want three councilmen in a meeting and trying to relay to me what happened.
That, that's why I'm saying...
Talk about it publicly or...
No, I'm not wrong with that.
As, as these gentlemen did what, you know, what you were going to say to them and see if they're going to take what you said out of advisement, and the council wishes to relay a, a position, a financial position to Arquitas through management, that'd be fine. But this, this wouldn't be an appropriate topic, the back and forth in terms of budgets.
Then why is that?
I don't think either side wants to do that.
I don't think we can sit here with all the details.
Yeah. And you need to digest what you've been told, so you understand what their position is.
So if, so...
As you say, we can renew their position of staff.
So if I understand right, the question is, is the two percent, or the four percent an accurate, the correct number? That's the question. In order to get to the correct number, we've got to sit down with, well, you're not even ready because you don't know what...
That's in our company, I get four percent.
Oh, wait a minute. But that is the question, I understand it's in, is it the real number? It might be six percent, it might be three percent, it might be two percent, it might be exactly four percent. But we wouldn't know that until you come up with the new costs, looking at new bids and finding out and coming back and saying, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, that four percent is just for your engineering. So the question is, question is, is the four percent credible? Is that the right, that's what I hear up there. Is it one percent, two percent, three percent, five percent? What is that number?
I think that's what we're understanding.
Now, now, when you hit the contract, how did you come up with four percent? And how did you, I mean, if, if it's not a real number, how do you know you're not screwing yourself? Use that word.
We don't, quite frankly. We, we rely on our historical database and, and I can speak at least back to the eighty-seven. We've always used four percent. Sometimes it's been a little tight, sometimes it's, it's given us a little bit of margin, but over the long haul of twenty-plus years, four percent has typically been right in there. Because we've had, we've had years through this period where, where some people didn't get more than maybe a two percent raise, but then others on the team because of their credentials or their, again, it's merit-based increases, we're not tied to inflation, others are getting a five percent. We're talking about a team of roughly twenty professional engineers and technicians working on this.
Well, that's not feeling right in business.
Right, fuel costs, insurance, our, our indirect overhead costs, who knows what our insurance costs will do from now to next year. If we sat down and did them, yeah, I don't know, you know, if I pull in our accounting and our HR people, I don't know if we would be able to justify more than four percent. I can, I can tell you, I did look at the key team members, just quickly, the key five people, Chris and four others, and their increase from the original time that this was estimated till now was more than twelve percent, which is three, three years at four percent. So I don't know if I'm taking that to a very detailed calculation whether I would be justifying more than four percent.
Are you required by the state or some federal agency to put a, a clause in there to say, is that four percent, is that part of the required contract? Is that a number to be put in? Or was that something that you're negotiating as a company?
That, that was this particular USDA contract. I've seen contracts with similar clauses, I've seen contracts that are just generic, it says, just generally that it's recognized, if this situation occurs, you're going to sit down and, and determine what the escalation should be.
But this particular contract?
This contract...
You had to, you had to, you couldn't exclude that paragraph?
No, USDA is, it's pretty uppity if you try to alter their...
Okay, so, so now to satisfy this council, how would we equitably and quickly come up with a number so we can move on with the project, whether four percent is the actual number? How would we do that? I'm just asking in general.
I don't know. I mean, I, I know the basis for our number and, and, you know, we're willing to live with that. If I had to go back and redo it, like I said, I don't know if it, it would show me that I'm in, I need more. I don't think you're going to want to hear that no matter what. I'm not sure I have any tips for how you would determine on, on basis, you know, whether three and a half percent or four percent versus...
Has the percentage ever been negotiable? Four percent that you're negotiating with that would be for your contract?
I personally, in my twenty-five years of business, I've never had a situation where a project got delayed literally for three years. Usually, I mean, it's not uncommon, you know, six months, nine months, you know, you're still dealing with, within the same, generally within the same calendar year of costs, at least on the most, the biggest direct costs of payroll. So usually we'll, we'll just try to work with it. And in those jobs, you know, we, we end up maybe not making much because it does impact us, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to rock the boat. You know, this is, this is a much more substantive issue, three, three years, that's, that's a big difference. And not only just the cost, but as we pointed out, the, the actual engineering, I mean, we can't just blow off the dust from this thing and go out to a contractor. B would be sharing huge amounts of risk if we did that. We need to go back and we need to audit this job and make sure that everything we, we knew was right in two thousand nine is still right with regard to the thousands of pieces that are going to be bought and put together by the contractor. That's, you know, this, this is kind of a separate issue here, but that's equally important. We need to put out a good quality set. We want to maintain our high level of quality in projects that we give you and do our best to keep the change orders low as possible because at the end of the day, that's really the big money. This is going to be a eleven million dollar project, eleven, twelve million dollar project. And the difference between ending up with maybe two percent change orders versus five percent would make this discussion pale in comparison.
Ultimately, at your firm, who has the decision, who makes the decision? If you went to them and said, listen, the city of Columbia would like to negotiate this four percent, down to two or two and a half, who ultimately makes that decision at your firm?
A regional manager would, would give permission to essentially, you know, in theory, not make any money, potentially take a loss.
Well, the purpose of this meeting tonight then is to give Keith direction here. I'm just asking you, what are we doing here tonight? We're here to give him direction. We've had the first rating on this, but we're not going tonight. We've never had an order.
Well, here's the direction I'd like to give. I'd like Keith to negotiate with this regional manager.
So let me finish my statement. My statement is that in order to, this is, in order to go through the process of determining whether the four percent is the right number and the three and a half cents is not or four and a half cents is, I am, I, I think this project ought to be moved forward. So I don't know how, I don't want to worry all that Keith Millware position is, but I'm going to tell you, I would like to move forward based on honoring the contract. That's what I'm saying tonight. I find each other, so I go down here and give a direction because he needs to know whether to move or not, water plant or no water. Negotiate a half percent or a percent or not negotiate. Find the real number or not find the real number, or say the real number is close to four percent. It could be higher, it could be lower.
It won't be higher.
Well, you don't know that, Brian.
It's written in our contract.
You don't know it.
It can't go above four percent, Tom. It can't go above four percent.
You're either going to hold on to the contract or you're not. You're going to ask him to come back and void the contract and find the right number. If the right number is four and a half percent, that's what you'll pay.
That's what I'm saying.
That's not what we're saying. We're saying we'd like to negotiate the four percent. That's what we're saying, Tom. That's the number they put in there on?
Based on what? Based on what? Just because you want it or it's the real number?
No, based on the fact that they're raising the price by fifty thousand dollars to Columbia. When you...
Oh, 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 stop right now. I'm talking, so just listen to me.
I'm talking too.
What I'm trying to tell you is, if you're going to avoid a contract, then you're going to find out what the real number is and live with it.
I don't want to avoid the contract.
Or you're just wanting money back based on...
And they're wanting more money, Tom.
Calm down.
Gee, I can't believe you guys are sitting here complaining that we want to save... Gee, I can't believe you guys are sitting here complaining that we want to save the city money.
I can't believe you don't understand that.
I can't believe...
You're not down.
Unbelievable, unbelievable.
I can't believe that you don't understand. And I'm the one that do to make you understand.
I don't believe you don't understand.
I can't believe you don't understand, Jim.
I do understand.
No, you do not.
This is what I understand, this last page. That says it's going to raise by 4%.
Is that the right number?
That's the right number according to them.
Is that the right number?
According to them, that's the right number.
Do you want to get to the right number?
I want to get below 4% is what I want to do, Tom.
Oh, you just want to have him get money back?
That's correct. Money that they haven't spent.
What business worldview then is?
Money, I'm not telling them to do it for zero, Tom. I'm telling them to work with the city to save the city a little money. Holy mackerel! When you buy a house, do you negotiate the price or you just say, "This house might be worth $150, not $130. I'm going to give you $150,000"?
You're not going to buy it, you cow! You are... You're not going to buy a house for less than its worth. The contractor's not going to sell it to you.
Mayor?
I can't believe you don't understand what I'm...
Yeah, you know...
I've listened to you for an hour and a half here, you don't understand it.
Jim, or Mayor, this makes good press. Trying to save money, but you...
Sure does, doesn't it, boys?
Wait a minute, it's my turn.
I'm not a boy.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Hey, stop.
Come on.
You know, back a while, back a while, we had a stormwater project going. We could have went with the same contractor, with the same two that take credit for hiring Arcadis. Knowing if we'd cost more...
Cost us...
Because they had the new cost Columbia more, didn't seem to be worried about the money at all time. They just wanted to prove that they could hire a different contractor that would have to start from zero again on the stormwater.
You don't know their...
Well, it had to cost more when you... You can't use somebody else's plans, right?
No, you're saying the stormwater, using them costs more, really costs more. We never did it, can't do it.
Well...
That's an assumption, Bob.
The... No, it's not an assumption, because the other engineer drew up the first plans. Your company can't use plans that somebody else drew up. You have to go over them and go from the start.
I'm not...
You have to include that.
I'm not familiar with the details there, but my recollection of that situation was that the other consultant had done a citywide stormwater...
Yeah.
I believe, I'm not sure if it was a master plan...
Master plan.
Essentially a master plan. And had, you know, conceptual level solutions mapped out in their master plan, which is pretty common. I mean, that's a master plan, to my understanding, was sound. And our work picked up where that left off.
You didn't go over his plan?
We absolutely used his concepts as a...
His concept, but I mean, you start from...
But the plans were just conceptual drawings. You still have to start with surveying and redevelopment of ground sheets and the detailed design from there. And then, once you get into any job like that and you're looking at it from a more detailed standpoint, you find other localized details that somebody who knew the master plan wanted to see.
Yeah.
You go out, you walk between the houses, you see different things. And you advance and evolve the concepts from the original designer, which could have been us or anybody else. They evolve into the final design. So it's not my... It was never my understanding that there was no value in that master plan, I believe.
I didn't say there was no value there.
That was the launching point for where we picked up and moved forward.
Here's what I'd like to see.
Anyhow... Anyhow, there was no worry about attending the engineers there. Now this makes really good press, trying to save the engineer.
I'm not trying to do anything with the press. I'm caring about the people in the city. And it seems like you guys are caring about the engineer firm.
You weren't worried about it on that contract.
Isn't that funny, how you made the line?
You made the line. That contractor's okay with it.
Good job.
But not this one.
Thank you.
Ultimately, when we started this, we had agreement, 4% was in the agreement.
It's in agreement.
So we knew it all along.
We knew it all along.
So ultimately, it's our fault, it's our responsibility, correct?
We may not have been there to...
USDA delays.
Right. So, but we had it in our contract that we would get this one back for the delays.
Did you know about the 4% in the contract?
No.
Neither did I. Did you know?
What's that have to do with it?
I guess addressing it, nobody up here knew there was 4% in the contract. You either know it...
Of course the town knew.
You either accept it or fight for it.
Maybe neither knew, I never knew. Until he presented this two weeks ago.
You either find the real number or you accept it. I'm willing to accept it at this point, because I think it's probably damn close to being the real number.
What I'd like to see is Keith negotiate with his regional manager and see if there's any way to cut the fee. Not eliminate, to cut it.
I think we need Mayor to go ahead and he can pull council or however you want to do it to go ahead.
We either need to move along or...
Be in the project. Can the project, on the other?
You decision maker up here is...
I say, go over everybody.
I just gave you my opinion, just like you have.
I haven't said, I haven't said boo to you all. I didn't say anything to you. What's everybody want to do?
We've got a guy out of the audience here who wants to... No, I was going to say, move on.
That's what I was saying.
Okay. Make a decision, guys.
You're making a bar, you're making a point. Move on or we're going to trade...
Go on, move on. So Keith knows.
Who wants to start? Brian?
I would 100% like to negotiate, because I'd like to start this relationship. Move on, have a certain playful situation. And I feel for myself that if we don't, it would be wrong.
I say move on, because 4% was in the contract. We knew it. We may not have known it, but it was in the contract somebody had acknowledged.
I say move on to the contract, right? It seems basically honest to me. And I've known this company for, it was spent by your person throughout. We've been with them for 20 years. And they have never taken us yet. Done some good projects. Still a plant?
I'd like to negotiate. I don't think a week's worth of negotiating would kill the project.
Reginald? I'm going to take a poll. I think we should move on to the contract, but I don't see anything wrong with negotiating this 4%. I think that's what we're here, that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to represent people in Columbia. And you guys appreciate that. The other side of this thing, kind of a question for us, it's possible that USDA may change the loan grant matrix because of this $50,000. Is that what I heard? Just make that up.
I was writing that one. In your conversations in recent weeks, any chance that they've changed the distribution of grant loan? If the total lot of package, one above certain threshold have changed?
I can't say for certain. USDA has never been one that you can predict what they will do. Over the timeframe that this has occurred, their percentage grant and loan percentage has changed. It initially started out as 60-40, but due to the continued delay, we're now at a point in this final round that they did here, it's at 70-30, where you now have less grant money and more loan. A continuation of that or any kind of delays or changes in the funding that they've now established at 70-30 could potentially cause it to go even further, because they have suggested that, that that number, that split gets, the grant money gets less and less. Don't know for certain, but...
Are you saying that if costs go up, that 70-30 may become...
Could become 75-25. Where you'll get less grant.
I think it has more to do with time than amount. As time goes on, at least over the last six, seven years, we've been doing projects that happen to be funded by USDA. You know, their funding's up and down, it's tied into what's going on in Washington. And generally, their mode in recent years has been to try to spread money around more and more and more. So to do that, the only way for them to do that, unless it gets particular help in Washington DC, is to reduce the amount of grant money, so they can do more projects.
So that only do they... They're in charge of the stupid thing. But they're also in charge of the delays that cause less distributions.
Right. Typically, when they overcommit or, you know, we don't, we can never be sure, but, you know, if somebody behind the scenes in DC had more influence, advanced their project for a particular state, that could be happening. It is a federal agency, so it's hard to figure what we figure on as compared to the Ohio, the state Ohio funding agencies.
Maybe what we need to do in addition to you guys thinking about wanting 4%. Maybe we need to talk to our congressman.
I bet we do that.
And...
He's the one who kind of pushed us off.
Let me finish, Jim. And maybe somebody needs to contact USDA and explain to them, "Look, we're trying to fix this right here. You guys pulled us off for three years and it cost us $50,000. Is there any way you could modify this?"
Well, I think that would be a lot of opinions. Chris and I will talk to USDA on this increase. What's your opinion, where is this going to be? Wouldn't do that for a second.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just to add on to that, we have had some initial discussions with USDA regarding this increase. I'm not sure how far we'll be able to go with that. They typically will not move forward with changes until there's something concrete in place. As in, basically, they want to see that the city is agreeing to changes or increases in the overall costs, what have you. They want those presented to them. And then they will then look at that, review it, and then come back to you and tell you how that impacts the overall funding. We have already started those to, again, identify that to USDA, because we had some of those earlier discussions. And we've continued those discussions with them. At this point, right now, they're really, the way I understand it, they're waiting for us, that the city and us, to present something to them that shows what these numbers are going to be, these increases are going to be at this point. And which then they'll turn around and give us a report as to how that's going to impact the project we're running.
Reginald?
Now that I've calmed down, I'm sorry. I think Bob, calm me down a little bit. I think we need to move ahead, because we've chosen you to represent us. This is not going to be the only quarter that you're probably going to see in this project. So we need you to represent us. Well, we'll be a half-year team, three-quarters of your team, we'll be all of them. Hopefully, you'll save us more than whatever the difference is if we found out what the real number was. Whether that be a percent or 2%. By representing us with a full team and doing the job, I think we need to move forward and honor the contract. And hopefully, you will represent us like we expect you to, like you have in fact. And hopefully, that 2% or 3% will be small changes of what you can do to help the project as a... But I don't know, you got to talk. Well, I don't know what you...
We all want to move forward. We just want to work from a crisis standpoint first.
And I think Bob was pretty quiet tonight with me talking about this stuff. But the fact that we need to move on, which I agree with, and if there's a possibility of negotiating something, that would be...
Do you want the ordinance thrown up for the next meeting?
Why don't you just leave it Keith's hands to discuss this matter with Arcadis and USDA. That's suggested, and then come back to council with the best possible options.
With an ordinance at that time?
Perhaps. It depends on the timing, it's crucial.
The timing is crucial.
We do need to move forward. There's no problem in getting the ordinance. We want to come back with as much information as we can to satisfy the concerns expressed tonight.
Can we have that by the next meeting?
What, before? Two weeks.
Come on, just to... Our interface with the USDA, we can't control whether or not vacation is...
We can't go with the surveying.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time coming in and staying with us. And we do feel excited, Brian, that I'm feeling free to come and play and talk online. No problem, I've been a lot of council meetings. I agree with it, and definitely, if, and of course, if I get through this in the next few days, if there's any other questions, again, we'd be nice. For a lot of people, it's stuff you weren't here for originally, so if they need any more information, just let us know.
Yeah, that's cool, you have any more questions here?
Yeah, back there, there's mine, yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple resolutions. We had a motion ready by Tyler Ollie.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
County? Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number 12-R-434, second reading. A resolution to exclude approval of city asylum, which according to otherwise be required, for alternate method of appropriation of local government fund and local government revenue assistance fund money to be distributed in 2013.
So, second.
Any comments?
Ian? Bishop?
Yes.
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
County? Yes. Wait.
Yes.
Burris?
Yes. Resolution number 12-R-435, second reading. A resolution approving the new alternate alternative method of appropriation of local government fund money to be distributed in 2013.
So moved.
Second. Any comments? Yeah?
Do you?
Yes. Yes.
County? Yes. Wait.
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes. The last item on the table is going to be drawn and explained right today. I've been discussing this matter involving the county kind of building department, being the county prosecutor for quite some time. The prosecutor represents the county commissioner, the county commissioner is the actual party of interest here. And prosecutor, assistant prosecutor and I thought we had an arrangement worked out, but at the last minute, it was a pledge. So I put it on here because I initially thought that if we got it done tonight, we might be able to get this done before the September meeting of the board of Columbus. But because of the additional issues that come up, we won't be able to do that. So to summarize further, the prosecutor and I believe that this can be worked out satisfactorily in September. So there's no rush though. You know, no one's being prejudiced by this anyway, because as you know, any contractors or property owners dealing with commercial or industrial or residential properties in excess and beyond three dwellings, they deal with Columbus anyway. So there's no argument here. So if we can get this done, then I think we can, it'll be brilliant. Bishop?
Dick McBean, I'm on the planning commission. I'd just like to point something out on this issue. We know it's not going forward right now. To give all of you an opportunity to talk to other people and find out what you want information on this. Through the business of the planning commission, we've had a number of contractors and building owners who have come to us after the meetings generally, because they don't want to talk on the record, and said to us that they don't feel that this is in their best interest to proceed and do this with the Mahogany County versus the way they currently do it. The main reason is because it, it is a lot more complicated process of dealing with Mahoney County. In one case, it was, it was a situation where a business was moving into an efficiency building and they said that had they had to go through the Mahoney County group, that they would have probably spent two to three months with all the permits and applications and everything that Mahoney County group required as opposed to going through our normal planning commission process in the state. And had they had to do that, that business would have chosen to locate someplace else where they're locating in Columbia. So I don't have all the, all the builder, oh, by the way, they don't want to do this in public. They're not going to come to the public meetings, make these statements to us because in a public meeting, they're on the record and they have to deal with Mahoney County, they're a big business in Mahoney County. So I'd like to encourage all of you through, you know, before this finally comes up, to talk with builders, contractors, owners, facilities and everything, and, and get more information to decide this, is whether or not this is the best way to take the city. We've only had a few people that have come to us, I don't know that that's how everyone feels, but the few people that have come have all taken that same position, they refer to it the way we do it right now. I've talked to several of the exact opposite, and I've talked to two that have agreed with what we said. Yeah, I, I don't know what the overall consensus is, but I just thought it was worth advising, that's one way.
How many, how many businessmen talked to you?
I, I'd say that over the course of, uh, probably four to five at most, if that.
Because we, at the night of the meeting that the gentleman was here from Mahoney County, there were two or three contractors that were in favor of it.
Yeah, I agree. But I'm not trying to say this is no.
No, I understand, yeah.
It's just that's what we, and I think we need to get another piece in those fights.
Any councilwoman?
I have one. I've, I've got some fifty-fifty raffle tickets for anybody who's interested for tomorrow's. The buyer works this way for the, for the, or, 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 uh, a bucket of peas or six for five dollars.
Anyone else? What do you do here?